Ladies and gentlemen, the Lawrence Society is in board meeting is now in order. Members present, myself Chairman Beal Flores, to my left Commissioner Juan Martin, to my right Commissioner Orianna Andrews. Uh, we make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the June, May sixteenth, um, second.
Is the motion on the floor is consecutive to approve the minutes of the May sixteenth, may in all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next meeting of this board will be June twenty-seventh at six P M. in City Conference Chambers. Okay, first item on the agenda is a one day permit for all alcohol for Saint Anthony's Festival. Come in sir.
Hello Father.
Is this something you guys have every year?
Yes.
Your name please?
Uh, Father Eli.
Is this something that you have every year?
For forty-four years.
Okay. Do you have any questions or, uh?
We all make a motion, we approve the one day permit, alcohol permit for Saint Anthony's Malojon Festival.
Second.
Is the motion on the floor is consecutive to approve a one day permit for all alcohol for Saint Anthony's Festival, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is an all alcohol for Holy Ghost Fraternity. Your name for the record?
Reverend Zachary Francisco, President.
Is this something you guys have every year?
Um, do, but this is our first year applying for a liquor license for the event because we usually do it at the Portuguese Club, but scheduling conflicts and we had to do it at the church hall, which we do, our annual needs to apply for every year, but this is our first for our crew things.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the all alcohol permit for Holy Ghost Fraternity.
Second.
Is the motion on the floor is consecutive to approve for Holy Ghost Fraternity, one day permit, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item, item on the agenda is a wine and malt for Spigot River Event on August eighteenth. Anybody here from the bo house? Who's listening? Bo house? Spigot River Brewery?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we table it to the end of the meeting.
Second.
Motion on the floor is consecutive, table to the end of the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is also a wine and malt fraternity family reunion for Lawrence Bo House, I assume she's not here.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we table it to the end of the meeting.
Second.
Motion on the floor is consecutive, table to the end of the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a complaint from Lawrence Department. We're gonna address two complaints from Lawrence Department. Uh, there's an earlier complaint on five sixteen eighteen, and then there's a new one. Attorney, is there attorney here for California nightclub?
Mister Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Robert F. Kelly, I'm attorney Lawrence with offices at One Thirty Park Street, and I represent California nightclub bank doing business at Attica over the business located at One Mill Street, and we're prepared to respond to the, uh, complaints or reports that have been submitted to us.
Board.
I would suggest, Mister Chairman, subject to your approval or review, uh, there are, uh, four to six reports, um, regarding circumstances on the same date, March twenty-third to March twenty-fourth. Um, if the board, I think the board has probably been purview to the opportunity to review those reports. If they need to be written to the record, subject to your approval, then so be it. However, uh, we suggest that, uh, they are summary in, uh, in, uh, content, and we're prepared to respond.
Okay, I think in general, I'm elect, uh, if you can just give us, I think there's too much to read here.
Correct.
So I think if you can just give us two brief analogies on what happened in the first incident, and then...
So you want me to start with the incident on three seventeen first?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, on three seventeen Detective McMillan, uh, and Officer Negosian were assigned to impact patrol, nightclub patrol, along with Captain McNamara. They were notified by dispatch, so there's numerous calls for fights at the Attica nightclub, located at One Mill Street. With numerous other offices, they responded to the area for the fight. As Detective Negosian got out of his vehicle, he observed a female in a black hat, black T-shirt, walking on the sidewalk outside of Attica, holding a full bottle of Hennessy. He asked the female for the open bottle, advising her, uh, that she could not leave the club or the area. The female stated she was twenty-one, and she had bought the club legally, I mean, bought the bottle legally from the club. I told the woman that the bottle would be secured until the disturbance was cleared, and she could get the bottle at the station. The femo, uh, then handed him her I D., make sure that she was, uh, old enough, he then secured the bottle, and took care of the numerous fights in the club. Uh, he handed the bottle into evidence to Officer Hendrick, which was, uh, secured at the station. The bottle was a Hennessy of V S O P, and it is now in evidence at the Lawrence Police Department. That's the question.
That is the, is that the normal or?
No, that's the, that's the older one from three seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, at one fifty-one A M.
Okay.
May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Sergeant Sorillo, is it correct in the report, uh, that the, um, report states that he asked a female, um, uh, female stated she was twenty-one, and had just bought the bottle, and did not say that she bought the bottle at the club, as you just indicated?
Well, the report says that, but my, my, my investigation that I did, I talked to Detective McMillan, as well as, uh, Officer or Detective Negosian, they both stated that the female stated she bought the, the bottle inside the club, and she was outside the club.
But Officer Negosian made a report, and that doesn't say that. Is that correct?
I'm reading from the report, and I'm telling you what my findings were.
I understand, but you weren't there, were you?
Nobody investigated, investigated the matter further.
So, but the investigating officer did not say?
It does not say that in the report, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, second report.
Uh, second report, I'll start with Officer Smart, who was working the detail on that night, I think his report summarizes it, and then...
So was the detail added?
There was a detail that night, assigned to the Attica nightclub, from this incident, and then I'll, uh, instead of reading through all the reports, like we said, I'll then take, uh...
Just a brief idea of what happened, Jim.
Yep, and then I'll read from Officer, uh, Detective Sergeant Rossi's report. Uh, on March twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, Officer Smart was assigned to work the nightclub at Club Attica, um, from twenty-two hundred hours, which is ten o'clock till two A M. At about one thirty-five hours, one thirty-five in the morning, on the second floor of the club, he observed, uh, several heavily intoxicated patrons begin to argue verbally with each other. The club's security began to escort them out of the club. At this time, he looked around the second floor of the club and witnessed several other fights breaking out. He immediately called for backup at Club Attica. He was assisted by security at getting some of the disorderly patrons out of the club while backup was arriving. Uh, while he was at the front door of the club, security informed him that they needed assistance upstairs, and said there was a large crowd fighting upstairs. Along with other offices, he went inside to get patrons out of Attica. When trying to get disorderly patrons out, the fighting escalated, to patrons getting metal chairs thrown, and hitting other patrons in the face with the metal chairs. Some patrons were trying to go after each other, and needed to be restrained, and disorderly patrons were escorted from the club. While outside, uh, the entire shift, midnight shift, along with the Essex County Sheriff's Department, impact offices, uh, were called to the scene to assist with the disturbance out the, outside the, of Attica nightclub. A couple Lawrence police officers had to make arrests while dealing with disorderly crowd during the time outside, um, the whole shift, the canine impact patrol was severely outnumbered by the number of customers from Club Attica that inside. The crowd while outside began to break out in numerous fights, and our shift was thinned out trying to deal with the, with the, with the fights. When trying to deal with the situation at Club Attica, all officers on scene, along with patrons and security from Club Attica, heard five to seven gunshots fired from near the location. The shots that were fired were around one, maybe two blocks away, they weren't quite sure, but it was in close proximity of the club. He believes the shots were in connection with the disturbance at the Club Attica. During the disturbance, arrests were made for the disorderly patrons of the clubs at Attica, they were all transported to the station. Um, the report from Officer Rossi states similar, he was the sergeant in charge of impact patrols, they all responded to the law, uh, to, to the fight over at Attica. Uh, and he writes that, uh, there was over a hundred people in the street, as well as exiting the club. Several of the patrons who were walking out had cuts, blood on their, uh, faces and body, while attempting to see if anybody needed medical aid, a large fight broke out with other individuals. One of those individuals was later pepper sprayed and arrested. Uh, he writes that they raided, they, they radio dispatched and requested all working offices to respond, respond to Club Attica. Uh, all patrol officers working, some from the early night shift, as well as state police and Essex County Sheriff's Departments responded to the scene. Um, they were, again, but I won't show the whole thing.
Mister Chairman, I thought we were getting a summary of, uh...
So basically, yeah, you're getting the same thing?
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave anything out because, I don't, I mean, again, if I leave something out, it may get picked apart, so I wanna make sure that all the pertinent information is, comes across, Jim. That's all. Uh, again, he goes on to say that the crowd was very large, was very hard to control, uh, there was a lot of unruly intoxicated people exiting the club that appeared to be over served, and then we had a shot fired. And again, there's similar reports that say the same thing, on and on and on.
I'm prepared to respond, uh, it's rather overwhelming, uh, with all the reports that have been, uh, written, which is, um, obviously, I would suggest kind of unusual, but there was a, certainly an altercation that occurred outside the premises, but let's, let's go to the beginning. On, uh, May seven, uh, March seventeenth, there was an incident outside the premises where, um, there were no arrests. Um, a woman was confronted that, uh, had a bottle of alcoholic beverages, no, uh, suggestion of where, uh, there might have been a suggestion, but no evidence of where it came from, no identification of the woman, no arrests made. But as a result of that night, what did Attica do to be a better license holder in the city of Lawrence? What they did was, first, they hired a detail, and there, and I think, uh, I believe Sergeant Sorillo will probably confirm, that there are no details hired in the establishments in Lawrence on Friday nights, due to many factors. However, they hired a detail so that they could be more in conformance with, uh, the rules and regulations in keeping things quiet for the evening of March twenty-third to March twenty-fourth. However, a potty bus arrived. A potty bus arrived, and patrons came in, and obviously, those patrons from the potty bus, uh, were one of the causes of, of the problems that occurred outside the club. And the, uh, um, you know, there was a, Officer Smart was the detail officer, um, he, um, again, there were no incidents, well, there was an incident inside the club, however, there, the altercation occurred outside the club, outside the jurisdiction really of the proprietors, and what have we done since that? We've no more potty buses, and what did they do that night? On the, on the date of March twenty-fourth, the early morning hours, they took the necessary steps of putting on the lights fifteen minutes earlier, cutting off the music fifteen minutes earlier. However, the people, when they were leaving the club, became, uh, aggressive, and outside the club, there was an altercation. Obviously, this club has a capacity, uh, on the second floor for three hundred and fifty people, very large, uh, capacity. But hiring the detail beyond their security, they have their own security people there, and the reports that I'm sure the committee members have digested, would, would show that the committee, the security were escorting the people outside the premises. Outside the premises, um, things, uh, got out of hand. But for everything that, you know, to suggest that the, some shots fired at Lawrence General Hospital Emergency Room has anything to do...
Who says the Lawrence General?
That's what, that's what it says in your report.
No, it says within a block or two of the facility.
Yeah, but it was confronted at the Lawrence General Hospital Emergency Room in the second report. And, I mean, shots fired, we know we have shots fired, we had shots fired on Common Street. Uh, we, you know, unfortunately, there, there's a situation that, that obviously, uh, needs your attention, but on, on this given night, there were no particular laws violated, they turned on the lights, they shut off the music, they had a detail, and, um, they did what, what best they could to, uh, control the crowd. Now, what has happened since then? Since then, they have lessened voluntarily the number of people they allow into the second floor. They continue to, uh, to hire a, uh, try to hire a detail, but some of the police aren't, aren't willing to, uh, to serve in that capacity, and because they know that they're a target. Attica is a target of the Lawrence Police Department, for good or for bad, large, maybe one of the largest places in the city, but they're a target, and they know they're a target. They know that everything they do is scrutinized to the nth degree, and we welcome it, and they do everything they can to adhere to the rules and regulations, uh, of the Lawrence Licensing Commission, and, and the privilege they have of, of, uh, of having that license. We suggest there's nev, they haven't been, there haven't been no previous violations. Very important fact to remember, no violations that they have been brought before this board for. I suggest, with the increased scrutiny, with the increased, uh, security, and with lessening their, voluntarily lessening the number of people they're allowing into the second floor, I suggest that, uh, a warning and maybe a review at a future date would be a disposition that would be, uh, equitable.
How, are you aware of any prior violations?
I can go get the file if you'd like.
Just, if I may speak...
Mister Martin, let me just, uh, Brian Corrigan, Assistant City Attorney. I don't know how long Mister Kelly's been representing, uh, this particular licensee, but I'm, I'm reading from the A B C C website here, there are at least two fairly recent, um, decisions resulting in, uh, suspension. Um, the most recent coming down on December thirteenth of two thousand and seventeen, just, whatever, six months ago, resulting in an eight day suspension for service to an underage patron. Four of those days were held in abeyance, uh, during a two-year probationary period, which is still running. So, um, so presumably, if there's another violation here, and this goes to A B C C, they're going to, um, they're going to impose that additional four day suspension that they're holding in abeyance, um, provided no further violations of chapter one thirty-eight occur. So, I just wanna make that, uh, point clear, I mean, I may be wrong, I, I don't know, Mister Kelly, this, you know, maybe this was a different licensee, but it's California nightclub, E A X, One Mill Street. I, I did not handle this particular A B C C appeal, maybe you did, but, uh, this is right off the website.
And I also believe there's one pending right now for, that they caught two more underage in the A B C C. I wanna say, also in, in February, I'll get that report from, uh, Joe from the A B C C.
My statement to the board...
Do you have something pending?
My, nothing that I know of. My statement to the board was that they have not been before this board. Okay, the A B C took an administrative action, uh, I'm not purview of that, uh, did not represent them in that capacity, but I'm told that there have been no violations that have brought attention from the local board.
Well, in response to those two, 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 uh, reports, the first thing is, uh, that the patron, when they talked to her about where she bought the bottle, she said it was from inside, he wasn't subject to arrest, she had no reason alive, so I would, I have no question why her credibility would be questioned, or there should be any issue with, you know, her saying where she bought the bottle.
And do you have the name of that person?
Uh, I don't, it's, it's not in the report, but...
Of course not, and she was, she read all this...
Is it made up?
Nope. Well, there's no name.
How can we, how can we respond? And then in response to the second one, with a potty bus, when a potty bus pulls up, I mean, shouldn't the security see these intoxicated people getting off the bus and not allow them into premises, that you spoke of?
We're, we're saying the potty bus came, and later, the people that probably came from the potty bus were the cause of the disruption, so it was no indication...
You don't know for a fact?
We believe that they, people on the potty bus were from Worcester, some of them were subsequently arrested by your personnel, Sergeant?
Well, again, I think it, it goes to the, to the responsibility of the nightclub, again, to make sure that intoxicated people that are getting off potty buses are not allowed into establishments.
We're, we're never saying the people that came in were intoxicated, well, we're saying those people were disruptive later on.
Okay, well, we have a long history in this city where, where potty buses and people from out of town come here, and, you know, wanna use this as a playground in disruption, we've had that in the past, and we've, we've kinda got away from that. So we've talked to the nightclub, saying that people from, that come in potty buses shouldn't be allowed in, and they're full well aware that anybody that's intoxicated shouldn't be allowed into a nightclub.
We agree with it.
Obviously, it leads to, it leads to problems, so, okay.
What was your recommendation?
Well, again, in the fairness, he is correct that it's the first time they've been coming before this board this year. Uh, it's also the first time they've come before the admin, new administration in the police department. So the chief wants to be fair, uh, he offered an educational program a couple of months ago. We wanted a three month reduction and rollback of hours, effective immediately to eleven o'clock, but the chief decided that a one month rollback of their hours to eleven o'clock, we wanna be effective immediately, because this is a big weekend for them, uh, and it'll be effective on June eighteenth, which is Monday. So a one month reduction of hours.
Whenever, whenever there's a violation, how do you give them a fifteen day?
Not when we're, not when we're rolling back the hours, that was already decided by the A B C C. Correct.
Yeah, I mean, they have a field period, you know, well, actually, yeah, you're talking about rolling back hours, okay, it's not back.
So a rollback of hours, I think we've already got this rule from the A B C C there.
It's, uh, the A B C C has no standing...
There's nothing on hours, they have...
Yeah.
It's, I'm still within the purview of the board to roll back hours.
So we're looking for a one month, we're, we're not gonna go with the three month, we're gonna go where it's been their first time before the board, we'll be fair, we'll give them a one month rollback. They also have a pending matter coming in for next month, that's gonna be put before the board for a violation in a large fight on five nineteen to two thousand and eighteen. It's the last month.
So, so, um, before you came on this board, there was a discussion, that Lieutenant Conway was on this board, and you could, a whole, a club can only control so much after everybody gets out of the club, you know what I'm saying? They can't control every two guys that had problems two weeks, uh, two weeks ago, and then they happen to meet at the club, and then they get into a fight. So I mean, it's bad.
I think, I think this one on the twenty-fourth is a lot more than just the fight between two people, you have people throwing chairs...
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying a comment.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to say is even though, I mean, they hired a detail, okay, which we've had a problem here with clubs hiring a detail...
Correct.
...the last four years.
Yeah.
I mean, they're trying...
Well, the problem is, uh, how do you put one police officer?
Well, the police department should have sent three of them, they're willing to pay, and the police doesn't wanna pay for the detail, that's all the...
You gotta get, you gotta get people to, to actually go to these clubs to work, they, they become very unsafe, and that's why you don't have a lot of the officers working. So, you know, again, I worked nightclubs for a lot of years in my twenty-one years, uh, I, I wouldn't work nightclubs anymore.
Well, that, that happens a lot of the year, too.
They're not very safe.
But anyway, uh...
Same one office, but go ahead.
I'm willing to entertain a motion to give them two weeks, starting at, at given time to get their race together, I'm willing to entertain two weeks, call backs at eleven o'clock starting the first week of July. That's my feeling. I love two numbers.
Thanks.
Can you repeat that, please? You cannot, I'm speaking with me, can you repeat that?
I'm willing to entertain a motion to give them two weeks, call back to eleven o'clock starting the first week of July, myself personally. I have two other numbers that I have to make up there to do what they want.
Mister Chairman, give it...
First of all, thanks, and they hired a detail.
In the spirit of reasonableness, could you make it midnight that they would...
Well, I'm not willing to debate that, that's what I'm...
I'm only asking.
I think it's reasonable, I mean, that way, they get the hint that we're not gonna tolerate this anymore, so that's my opinion, two days.
I think it's a cop law, it's in the college, and make that motion.
Um, I'll second.
Is the motion on the floor is consecutive to submit hours for out of the club to eleven P M. for two weeks, starting July first. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman, the board.
Okay, next item on the agenda is gonna be, uh, Belmont Data, Blue Lounge.
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Howard Berger, I'm an attorney in Andrews, Mass., and I appear for Belmont Blue Lounge today. Also present in the room is the manager of record, and we're ready to respond to, uh, the sergeant.
Okay, we have something to talk, Sergeant Sorillo on this one.
I'm gonna read the report to record, or we...
Is it a big one? Yeah, this is the best.
Officer Leo Severa writes, uh, in his report, on Fri, on Friday, February twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, he was working uniform patrol in a mock cruiser, from one A M. to nine A M. shift. At approximately one thirty A M., he was dispatched to Lawrence General for a report of a gunshot wound victim that had arrived. On arrival, he met with the Lawrence General Security that directed him to room three. When he entered, he met with a male who was identified as Nathan Sinron Rivera, who was the victim of a gunshot wound to his mid to lower leg. While speaking, Mister Rivera, he stated that he was at the Blue Lounge, enjoying a drink, and at approximately fifteen to twenty minutes before one o'clock closing, he exited the club and made his way to his car located in the parking lot at, uh, not, uh, any C S credit union located at fourteen Angles from Irving Street. While in the parking lot, he heard an argument that continued near his vehicle, seconds later, he was suffering from a gunshot wound to his leg. At this time, a friend who was also leaving Blue Lounge, identified Nario Arias, saw Mister Rivera bleeding, and quickly tied his shirt around his gunshot wound to his leg. Mister Rivera was transported to Lawrence General by a male friend who goes by an alias of El Chato. Upon leaving El Chato at Lawrence General, he fled the area. After Lawrence Security Guard questioned him about his vehicle, shot the office... Shot after speaking with Mr. Rivera, Detective Rogers arrived on scene, interviewed the victim, he was transported and mid-flight is ground to Beth Israel Hospital. Detectives are still working on a suspect. That's from the first.
I guess I got the wrong. How many reports are there on?
That one there is, um, twelve, two, 23 of 2018 is the report. Would you like to see it, Mr. Chairman?
We got one here, this one, April 21st.
That's the next report. April 21st of Assault on Dangerous Weapon.
Commissioner, what happened?
Before we go to the next report, could I require while the first report people get tied up in the second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Is it the fact that all the activities that affected the individuals took place outside of the club?
Correct.
And the configuration, I think I'm familiar, this is on Amesbury Street, the credit union in fact is across the street heading towards Essex Street, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. At that time, did you or one of your four subsequently review or look at surveillance tapes of the club?
Inside the club?
Yes, inside the club or outside the club.
I'm not sure if detectives did, I don't have a detective report, I'm sure there was some follow-up, but I'm not sure if they reviewed the tapes.
Would it be a fair statement to say, or maybe you don't have direct knowledge, that the tapes were supplied to the police at their request?
I believe Detective Rogers, yeah. I don't, I, for some reason, I don't have Detective Rogers's report here. Uh, it wasn't in the packet, but I would say it was supplied.
Okay. Um, did any detectives that night during or before or after these incidents enter the club?
Yes.
And did they find, was there anything amiss in the club in terms of violations?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the second report.
Second report is from 4/21/2018, Assault on Dangerous Weapon. On Saturday, April 21st, 2018, at approximately 2:00 AM or 1:59 hours, Officer Ellie Soto was dispatched to Amesbury Street and the Doon Street for a stabbing. Upon arrival, she found Sergeant Montas in the basement of Blue Lounge at 2 Amesbury Street reviewing surveillance tape. Mr. Sergeant Montas stated that they had been in a large fight in the parking lot. As a result, there were two stabbing victims. Officer Gary also had a suspect later identified as Baez involved in the fight and detained in his cruiser. Uh, he, he responded, uh, she responded to the Lawrence General Hospital Street with the victim, Robin Flamenco, who stated that when she walked out of Blue Lounge, she found friends were arguing with a group in the parking lot. She believes that the argument was over a parking spot. She then proceeded to separate the two groups and a fight ensued. Flamenco stated that there was a group fighting, but that there were two men and specifically remembers as aggressors. A light-skinned male wearing a white shirt who punched him in the left side of the face. The other was a dark-skinned male with a knife with blades, wearing a black jacket and a blue shirt. It wasn't until later when he saw blood that Flamenco realized that the laceration was on the left side of, of his torso. Flamenco's girlfriend, Del Santos, who was with him at the time of the incident. Hospital stated that she saw a dark-skinned male flee the scene with another female on foot heading west on the, on the Ford Street. The Blue Lounge surveillance video, uh, shows two men fighting, Flamenco's fitting the description. The suspect, Officer Gary, had detained, was identified as Baez, the aggressor described as a light-skinned male wearing a white shirt. Baez will be summoned to court for hearing. She was also informed that a second stabbing victim, Johan Peniago, was transported to Holy Family Hospital. Officer Jan Smiley was at the hospital, Peniago, uh, and could be writing supplemental reports. Detectives then followed up on the incident.
Sergeant, again, a similar question. To the best of your knowledge, did the Blue Lounge voluntarily supply the surveillance video?
Yes, they cooperated, yes.
Did any of your officers on scene enter the Blue Lounge before or after the incident?
Yes.
Again, was there any obvious violations of liquor license requirements at the Blue Lounge?
No.
Was it an orderly crowd at that point?
At that point?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I believe so.
And was there any investigation as to the question of what happened before both of these groups of people exited the Blue Lounge? Was there any indication that there was anything going on in the Blue Lounge prior to their exit?
Not to my knowledge.
Was there any indication of violations in the Blue Lounge prior to their exit?
Not to my knowledge.
Um, have you ever had any complaints against the Blue Lounge prior to this?
Um, no.
Uh, to the best of your knowledge, and I can inquire of the commissioner, have there been any complaints before this board? I believe the answer is no, but I want to confirm.
Yeah, I don't have any, no, I believe so. Not on the disagreement.
Um, is it the policy of the Lawrence Police to do a subsequent investigation as to the events that occurred of these different injured people in the witnesses?
Yeah, detectives are still, I think, following up on some of those, looking for suspects.
As a result of that subsequent investigation to this point, do you have any indication that there was any infidelity in the Blue Lounge?
No.
Okay. Um, I have no other questions, Sergeant. Any other questions?
What do you recommend on this one?
Well, again, a lot of the problems are outside with unruly patrons that are exiting the club. I know that, I'm not sure if the Blue Lounge has a contract with the credit union, the parking vehicles over there, but.
No, we don't, we're not the board of directors of the credit.
They allow.
We allow, but there's no.
Yeah, I know that there's somebody, I don't know if he works for Blue Lounge or not, but they're charging people to park there and I guess it's under the security of, of them. But the, both fights occurred in, in the credit union as well as in a park.
I'll bring it up at the next board meeting.
So is there any other word going to, to, that, I mean, the responsibility of the club?
Well, the responsibility.
The people coming out of the club, what's going on? Because.
Well, I've met with, I did meet with the owner a couple of weeks ago and we discussed that obviously it was a problem because there was, there's been a couple of, on 4/25, there was a fight and disturbance that I responded to and I met with him and spoke with him. So there's been, there's been a lot of fights and problems out in and around the club. And I told him that he needed to obviously do a better job with his security because I mean, the vicinity around his club is, is, is a problem. And he agreed and he was, I think he's been doing a better job at it, but I mean.
So what is the recommendation of at least the problem to that aspect? I mean, is he supposed to have his security go outside and monitor all these people? But the previous Lieutenant Conway didn't want the security to get involved, but patrons leave in the business under the influence.
It says in the, in the rules and regulations that they're responsible for the vicinity around the club, the safety of patrons exiting the club and getting to their cars. I mean, the Lawrence Police Department can't do that at every club. We're stretched in. We've got 65,000 calls for service. I mean, there's no way that we can respond to all these nightclubs and make sure that everybody's getting to their cars safely.
Yeah, and, and just so the board knows, subsequent to the conversation the sergeant had with the owner and since the, these incidents, which are somewhat of a wake-up call for the club, they improved their security, they've expanded their security, they're more cognizant of what happens when people leave the club. But it is hard because if you know the area, by the time they cross the street and are in the credit union parking lot, they're not a mile away, but they're far away in terms of what's happening inside the club. So I think it would be a little untoward for the security to follow them across the street to a private parking lot where they park. That's not appropriate. So as a result of the sergeant's reports and the citation, to come before this board, the club has undertaken a plan to increase security. Now, the, the patrons inside who got into these arguments about parking and about unrelated things, there's no indication either in the video surveillance, the club's records, or in the conduct of that night, or in the police questioning, that they were over-served or there was anything inappropriate. They had an argument, a common argument about a parking space that could have happened if they hadn't been in the club. I mean, and it's almost, it's a bit of a stretch for the club to be able to control that outside conduct. But we're very respectful of the, of the problem. We want to improve the security and we treat it very seriously and we understand why we're for the board.
I think the first, I think the club owners should start realizing that if this continues to happen, it can't be a burden on the police department. So there might be a point where we're going to have to come back to hours of operation in general because the police can't control it, they can't control it, we can't continue it to be happening.
Counselor, if I could ask, you said that the club has, at this point, put a plan together or has it been implemented?
I, I've had discussions with the owner, but we've agreed that security should be increased and some viewing of the people leaving the club should be interwoven into their security plan. But no one, I don't think this board or, or the sergeant or anyone suggests that the security should follow and maybe get involved in an altercation that could be avoided.
No, that wasn't suggested. However, in terms of the number of, uh, security personnel that are currently employed, how many are currently?
There are five, there are five on the weekend.
And you're looking to increase to how many, sir?
With, considering hiring three more additional security.
And I apologize for my lack of recollection of, what's the capacity of the club?
168. 168, uh, units.
What did you open that?
Well, first off, I'm not suggesting that they walk a mile off the street to make sure people get to their cars, but I think it's, I think it would be, uh, within their scope to walk to the edge of their parking lot and look across the street where all these vehicles are parked. I mean, they, they don't, I'm not saying that they get involved, but they can screen observers. If they see something going wrong, they certainly can pick up the phone and call the police. Uh, they certainly can, can, you know, control their own parking lot as well as monitor the parking lot across the street. Their patrons are parking there, they have some sense of duty for the safety of their patrons. I mean, I, I understand what we're saying here, that we don't want them to, uh, you know, go, go out and get involved in things, but there has to be some type of responsibility of the club outside the boundaries of, of, you know, it's not open the doors and say, hey, you're on your own. Lawrence Police Department, you can handle this. I mean, let's, let's be fair, there's got to be some responsibility and, and that, and that's what we're looking for. To, you know, to his point, he is doing a better job, he's trying, but to me, these are too serious. These, these aren't just two fights. We have a stabbing and we have a shooting. These are serious situations and, you know, again, the Lawrence Police Department doesn't want it to get to the point where somebody is seriously killed. I mean, people have already been injured, one guy's in Beth Israel. So I mean, at what point, you know, do we, do we draw a line here? That's, that's, that's our point. And again, I agree, it's first time before the board, but these are two serious incidents.
What was your recommendation?
Again, we were looking for a two-week rollback of hours, 11 o'clock, starting on June 18th. And that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, give them at least two hours first so we give them some. Yeah, I, I.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we roll back the hours for a period of two weeks down to July 1st.
Second.
The motion on the four has been seconded to roll back the hours of Belmont Data on July 1st till 11:00 PM for two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, if I could just stand aside and make a request, Sergeant, if, if it's at all possible, I don't believe that this was something that we covered as part of the education, uh, a few weeks back, uh, where there seemed to be several establishments that are facing these issues. Um, if guidance or recommendations from the police department can.
I guess, or what?
Be provided to establishments around number, number, number of personnel, security personnel that you would recommend given, and it would obviously change by establishment based on.
And I, I don't know if that's something we do, I'd have to, I'd have to look into that.
I think we, we should like get together and have an idea of, maybe they have two security guys outside, that if something's going on, they can call nine one one. Just, you know, ease the flow on everybody or else, I mean, summer's coming, everybody's going to be.
A lot of these security guys that they, that they hire need to be trained properly and that's, that's, I know that's in the ordinance, that they have to be trained, they have to have crowd management. These are all things that they go over in crowd management when they hire these security guys. So again, they're not supposed to be hiring security guards just off the street, they're supposed to be from a, from a company that is trained in crowd, crowd management and trained in handling large crowds.
If I could just, uh, make, make that request. It's not that we're going to move forward or act on it.
I know they've got an association now, we'd be happy to meet with them, go over anything that they want to bring, if it's, if it's going to help with compliance, we're all for it. And I know the chief.
We'll have a larger discussion.
Absolutely.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is Carolina Alonfo, DVA Elite Lounge, 336 Comiskey. Anybody here representing Kelly?
What's your, your statement?
Do you have a representation there or?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see.
Okay, this is a, a report written on 4/2, 2018 for shots fired outside of Elite Lounge. On 4/2, 2018, a park at 1:14 hours, Officer Collins Tony was outside the Lawrence Police Department getting ready for a shift on the west side of the station, or the south side of the station. Several of the officers from the early night shift, including Officers Alivo, Garcia are also in the parking lot. At that time, they heard one gunshot, which was in close proximity to their location. They believe it came from the area in front of Elite Lounge at 336 Comiskey. Officers Alivo contacted dispatch, uh, which, uh, the location of the shots fired, at that time, officers went over the location. Upon arrival, uh, they found most of the patrons had left the area with only a couple of cars remaining in the parking lot. While searching the area, they found one shell casing on Palm Street, right in front of the entrance of Elite Lounge at 336 Success Street. Officer Alivo, Garcia, Gujon went into Elite Lounge, spoke with, with the owner, Carlos Gomez. Mr. Gomez played back the surveillance video from the front of the club, which was viewed by officers. Uh, the following is an account of what was seen. A light-skinned male, Latino male appears to get out and walk away from a black Mercedes on Palm Street near the entrance of Elite Lounge. This male walks to the parking lot, across the street from Elite Lounge, over to a new, new model, white Honda. The male walks across the street and attempts to enter the front door of the club. The male is then seen exiting the front entrance and firing one shot in the air as he walks onto Palm Street. Several people who appear to be friends with this male walk over to him at this time. The male walks back over to the vehicle, the parking lot, the male enters the same white Honda Accord and drives out of the parking lot on the farm, just ahead of the arriving offices. The male picks up a female in front of the club and drives away. This male was wearing a blue, blue jeans, a black hat, a very distinctive black shirt with a large gold chain print on the front with a gold eagle pendant on it. Mr. Gomez, Elite Lounge, informed Officer Garcia that he would make a copy of the video and have it for him. Additional videos will be requested from the parking lot. The nine-minute casing was picked up and a bowl was given out for the vehicle. The case was then later turned over to. The case was then later turned over to Detective Mahia, without reading from, so much from Officer Montas, Officer Montas' report. But he received information while off duty from an anonymous call from a cellphone. The male voice on the other line stated that the man who fired the shot outside of Elite Lounge, he gave his name, a description of the suspect, and the caller did not want to be identified. As he scrolled through the pictures, he came across one of the two males standing in front of his barely new Honda Accord. I guess this person sent pictures via Instagram. And he was able to get a partial plate off the vehicle, a Honda Accord, which was five Lima Victor seven-three-seven. It went back to a two thousand and fourteen white Honda Accord sedan. This was, this was pictured with the suspect in the common section and referred to her as the sister. The car went back to Catherine Peniagua, the residence of twenty-three Ohio Ave in the city. He inquired that, they inquired that the twenty-three Ohio Ave, the name was Johann Peniagua that fired those rounds on that night. Detective Mahia then took the case over, and I don't know if you want to read from. Anyways, Detective Mahia picked up the case and found out through Catherine that it was her brother that in fact fired the shots that night in front of Elite Lounge. A warrant was issued and his arrest is pending now.
You know, right now you're on three months of probation.
Well, upon, I just wanna add, Mr. Chair, that when Detective Mahia did his investigation, I also viewed the video. It seemed to me that the person who had fired the shot was very comfortable in that location, walking in and out, that people knew who he was. So they spoke to Mr. Gomez, I think he's here tonight, and he stated that he did not know the person whatsoever on the video. Never seen him before, he was very cooperative that night, handed us the videos and all that stuff, very, very cooperative. But he did not know this individual. So I did a little investigation on my own of Mr. Peniagua. And I find it very hard to believe, you say you don't know this gentleman? Is your husband here tonight?
Yes.
Do you know the gentleman that? No, you don't know him? He's seen him before? Well, okay, so neither one of you know him. But it seems to me that during my investigation, I went back to an employee list that you gave us last month before this court. And the maintenance guy during normal business hours is Johann Peniagua of twenty-three Ohio Ave. He works for you?
No, he doesn't work for us.
Well, yes, you submitted this list, this is your list? Attorney Kelly submitted this list. Maintenance guy during normal business hours, Johann Peniagua, twenty-three Ohio Ave, Lawrence, Mass. Counselor, is this not the list that you submitted? Well, you did on the last occasion, no more? Okay, well, I'll give the board, this is a list that he gave us of an employee. Well, he works for you, you should know him. Well, he knows him, you gave him a list. That's the guy that fired the rounds, nobody knew who he was. He works there. So once again, he's not cooperating with police, they fired rounds in front of the club.
Johann?
Yeah, Johann.
How do you hire somebody and you don't ask him for his name, his I D.?
Well, never mind that, how about the night that we reviewed the tape and he reviews the tape, he says he does not know this guy? Would you pay him a salary? Yeah, to make this guy during normal business hours. Would you submit something to the internal revenue withhold it or anything?
No, paying cash.
You're paying cash? But you can't do that. You're supposed to report it.
So what's your, so what's your recommendation?
Well, we wanna revoke their license. And pending revocation of license, we want to keep this rollback of hours. Obviously, they're gonna have a right of appeal. Their hours for the next six months until this matter is settled has to be eleven o'clock. But I reckon the Lawrence Police Department recommends.
This list, right?
You supplied that?
Last time you were in trouble for three months. This list you provided to the board and to Lawrence Police Department. All your employees that you have there, okay? That's his name. Johann Peniagua. He's the person that fired the gun. I know, but I mean, you hired him, it's his responsibility to know who he is. Okay, I understand that you don't know the guy's last name. But obviously, there's a way, there's a problem with the way you're running your business. Okay, we understand.
But I wanna say, I mean, you would not recognize a guy that works for you in a video? That's unclear.
When he showed you the video, explain to him. And you said you didn't know who he was.
You told Detective Mahia you don't know who he is. He works for you.
What do you mean you can't say? Right, and he asked you if you knew him. And why didn't you say you knew who he was? He showed you his face, not the name. So he asked you. And you knew the guy and you said no, you explained to him? No, he showed the video with the face. And you said you didn't know who you. He said you said you didn't know who.
Just let me say, we have another shot fired incident that they're coming in again for. Someone fires a gun outside that establishment. Yeah, on April twenty-second, we have another shot fired outside that location. And a subject, another guy arrested.
Sorry, but we can't hear that today.
No, we gotta get it.
He's just letting you know that you have something else coming up besides this.
I'll make a motion.
Unfortunately, it is.
I'll make a motion where you revoke the license for Elite Lounge.
Second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded to revoke Elite Lounge license, all in favor? Let's do a roll call. So we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Myself, Chairman Torres, yes. And Commissioner Jorge Hernandez?
Yes.
There's three to all on the votes for a revocation, what, what? We have a right to a fourteen-day appeal. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Maria Thomas, D B A Las Palmas. She's here for an operation, Thomas.
Her papers are completely in order, she was able to obtain from Mr. Devers the narrative, everything is fine.
Gentlemen, my name is Robert Manage and I represent Ms. Thomas, this is my client, she's seated here to my left. And we would hope that you would act favorably on our application. We've published a note about all these letters. I just wanna let you know, she's been here for ten years operating this establishment. She purchased the building recently. And that, as a result of the purchase of the building, she's now going to invest a substantial amount of money to improve the premises and change the heat grass too.
What are you gonna do upstairs?
Still.
You leave the hall or?
Yes.
Build the common?
We don't know yet.
But currently, the upstairs is not part of the operation.
Oh, is it separate?
Yes.
Oh, it's like a condo?
Okay, I'll make a motion where you approve the alteration of premises for Las Palmas.
Second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded to approve the alteration of premises for Las Palmas, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Father and Son D B A Club for general purposes, apply for a patio.
Good evening, Harry Beltrane with Father and Sons, represented with Roberto Basier and Delania Minaya.
Do you have any documentation?
Yeah, she came in this afternoon about one-thirty and provided the necessary papers.
Yeah, but does she have any documentation from the fire department approving? Or the city department approving that he can put a patio in there for the board?
No.
Cause we've got a letter. We've got a letter from the. We've got a memorandum from the licensing board from Peter Blanchett, who was the building commissioner. And he said, "We got the use of outside areas, please operate from the scene. The premises known as K O S S located in five ninety-sixth Street. Please be advised, at this time, the building and common is not satisfied with the Egress plans as submitted to the board."
Okay, we're not familiar with that, we can contact them this week.
What did he say? Did he say we got an authorization letter for the board from the fire department, from the government?
We would ask them that the matter be tabled so that we can get those authorizations.
Okay, I'll make a motion where you table any action.
Second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded to table the matter on pod for the next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a noise complaint for Jay's Food Corporation. Is anybody here, I'm sorry, it's not a noise complaint, it's a police complaint. The Jay's Food Corporation?
Yes, Chairman, I represent.
D B A Jay's Food?
Correct.
Is the owner of that?
He's right here.
So you're aware that, are you aware what's going on with that establishment, all the complaints?
Well, we've never received one report. You haven't provided us one report, neither has the police department.
You should have requested it.
If you tell us there are reports. If you tell us there are reports, Mr. Chairman, you are obligated to supply us those reports.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say, we didn't pull all the reports for these incidences. We're more concerned with the number of calls for service and the resources that we're providing at this establishment, similar to what occurred at other establishments that have come before the board. If you would like a brief summary of some of the calls and how they're trending up, would the mayor, along with the police chief, have a serious concern with the number of calls for service, services and the number of resources that are being supplied at this establishment?
Myself, I'm aware, I've seen all the reports, I'm aware of that.
You've seen the reports, but we haven't seen the reports. Where are they?
Well, I've seen the complaints, like, I'm not. I've seen the call sheets, I haven't seen reports. Of every time there's gonna call, the Lawrence Police Department, for what reason and to what location.
So I'll give you, just so everybody's aware, in two thousand and fourteen, there were sixty-five calls for service, which I think is a little high. In two thousand and fifteen, there were seventy-one calls for service. In two thousand and sixteen, there was two hundred and six calls for police services there, along with a shooting. And I believe, I'm not sure if in two thousand and sixteen, there was a murder there. In two thousand and seventeen, it dropped to one thirty-nine. And right now, well, when I ran the numbers, four months in, we had ninety-one calls for service. If we stayed at that number of calls for service, which I have an updated list, which is still growing, we'd be at two hundred and seventy-three calls for service for the year at Sam's. And this year alone, there's been two shots fired there and one person shot in the leg.
None of those have occurred inside the premises, correct?
No, in the parking lot.
And the parking lot adjacent to the premises?
No, in the parking lot. At three eighty-nine Broadway.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
Let me tell you a little bit about Sam's food store. It's been in existence for eight years and it's had a twenty-four-hour-a-day license all that time. Prior to that, for the last thirty years, it's been twenty-four hours a day. Prior owner Tedeschi, prior owner of that twenty-four-hour store. It's been a twenty-four-hour store for at least thirty years in the city. Now, there are many other twenty-four-hour convenience stores, nothing to do with alcohol. You've got Cumberland, you've got E Market, which is diagonally across the street from these premises. Diagonally across the street on Broadway. You've got every seven-elevens at twenty-four hours a day. And one of the several, you know, several places in the city that have the twenty-four-hour privilege. And I was especially intrigued when Sergeant Cirillo says to a previous license holder, "If there's ever a problem, pick up the phone and call L P D." Oh, wait a minute, don't call L P D, we're gonna take a record of that. And then we're gonna hold it against you. If you see drug activity, if you see violence, if you see anything improper, call L P D. Oh, no, no, please, you call L P D, we're gonna stick it to you. We're gonna stick it to you because you're gonna become a target because you're calling, reporting incidents. So I guess it's best to say to the license holder, who has security in his premises, from eleven to two on weekends, as, on the uniformed security, he's doing everything he can. There hasn't been a complaint brought before this board in the eight years this young man has been the proprietor. Not a complaint, nothing. And now you wanna slice him, you wanna slice his hours. Why? So the place across the street can do it better? Right across the street, look at the E shop.
They're dead school, the old guy moved out, they've only been there like three months.
Okay, so he can stay there. He's doing the right thing, he's not calling the police.
It's a business-to-business situation, not generalized.
Again, I can tell you that other people have come before this board that have had a number of issues with after-hours, especially the hours between one and five A M., which is a problem throughout the city and many establishments. And we're not, we're not just going after one particular person.
Go to liquor license holders, this is empty and good.
No, they're not, because I'll tell you, we did it to an eating establishment that was having a lot of problems. So it's across the board.
Well, you've never done, you've never called this particular entity for scrutiny.
And we never called the other particular entity.
Why are you bringing that up?
Because you're saying that we're attacking one business that's been in business for thirty years. The problem in this city right now is what's occurring between the hours of one and five A M. At these establishments. Not only the liquor establishments, but it's also the after-hours establishments that are serving food. When you gather these people together, or people that have been drinking in these locations, you have altercations, you have fights, and you have stabbings, you have shootings. It's stretching the resources of the. It's stretching the resources of the Lawrence Police Department too thin. We're not targeting anybody, it's across the board, counsel.
Have you ever done anything to a common vigilance in the city of Lawrence with a twenty-four hour a day license to operate? Have you ever done anything to limit their hours, yes or no?
We just did one two weeks ago.
Where?
Well, I, I don't wanna use the...
Yeah, we're not...
Name anybody.
Why should we name the people that we, we did it?
We just did one.
We did it, if it happened.
Unfortunately, the situation is like Sergeant there was saying. You know, the city is changing, okay? What we used to do thirty years ago, I lived in Lawrence since nineteen sixty-six, I used to sleep with my windows open and my doors open. You can't do that anymore. Things are changing, times are changing. And unfortunately, we as a city have to change with the times.
And again, I mean, you can see, just in two thousand and fourteen, there was sixty-five calls for service at this location, which I think is high. But how do we go from six, how do we be out? But considering where we are today, how do we go from, what is he doing different from two thousand and fourteen? Or what is he selling different from two thousand and fourteen to today that's causing two hundred and six calls for service?
There are so many police officers that patronize his store. And he says, "You know, I got problems, there are people outside, I see them dealing drugs, I see them doing this." All the police officers say, "Call us, call us." All you have to do is call it, just like you said, Sergeant. Call us, we'll be there. Oh, wait a minute, don't call us, we're, we're keeping a record. If you call us too much, you call us too much, we're gonna hold it against you.
Okay, well, again, uh, I've, I've reviewed the calls for service, I reviewed the times. They occur between the hours of one and five A.M. Uh, we did meet with, with the owner, uh, in the mayor's office this week and try to come up with a solution to try to rectify this. There was a, there was a solution on the table, uh, you know, to, to come up with some different hours to see if we could do it. Uh, he failed to get back to us and here we are tonight discussing this.
I mean, uh, let me introduce you to Vic. Vic, stand up, please. Uh, this is Vic Manaz, D.C.
Yes, that's from the mayor.
Vic, uh, now you've been informally introduced to the board by me. Will you tell them how you run your business?
Sir, I, I think at this point, we, we understand how he runs his business. Okay, we're not saying he's running a bad business. Unfortunately, it's the hours of operation he explained to you. Between the hours of one to five P.M., we're having too many problems. Wherever an establishment is open, the people are congregating after they drink.
How do you equalize that with the establishment right across the street that's open at the same hours?
It was closed, somebody moved there, and if he has problems, he's gonna have to deal with it too.
So, the, the people that, you know, are...
Unfortunately, that is, that is the way the city is going.
We're prepared, we're prepared to do anything this board suggests by way of increasing security. We have our security there, we will put outside cameras, we will, we're willing to do anything that has to be done to allow us to continue the privilege that we've had for the last eight years without interruption. To continue to run a convenience store, strictly a convenience store.
Hey, we're glad to hear that, but unfortunately...
I understand you were in the mayor's office, you were gonna come up with a solution. How come you didn't show up?
Show up, he showed up, he stayed for an hour and they demanded, and they, and they demanded, from what I'm told, it's either one to five or you're out.
He's supposed to... Counselor, that's not true, not demanded.
Well, request it. Here's, here's an alternative you can, here's an alternative you can't beat. Either shut down or show up at the board and do worse.
We had a very nice, we had a very nice... You were not threatening anyway, sir, you were not... Okay.
The alternatives weren't exactly attractive.
Well, again, the way you're putting it is, we, we robbed you.
Yeah, you robbed, oh, the, the two of you on him for an hour, closed, closed down, went to park.
All in favor?
Come on.
Uh, anybody else have any recommendations? We have, uh...
Well, the recommendation from, uh, the Lawrence Police Department, and I, I know you have a letter there, I don't know if you wanna read it directly.
No, I don't wanna read it, ma'am.
Uh, the hours of operation, we're looking for five A.M. to eleven P.M., Monday through Sunday.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
So, the motion on the floor has been seconded...
A discussion?
Nope. To adjust the hours of, uh, Sam's Food Store, three eighty-nine Broadway, Lawrence, Massachusetts, from the hours of five A.M. until eleven P.M., Monday through Sunday. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, David.
The recommendation earlier was one to five to shut down. Now you're telling me you're thinking of closing them at eleven? The joints don't close till one, they say that they have the problem from one to five. Can you reconsider that, Mr. Chairman?
Unfortunately, that's, we voted on and we can't re-...
You can reconsider it. I'm filing a motion for reconsideration now.
You can do that with our secretary, by the way, the time, thank you. Next item on the agenda is... Common Victor's License for Castillo Foods, two seventy-one Lawrence Street. Castillo Foods?
Yeah. Oh, we're not ready to vote on it. All papers in order?
All papers in order.
No, is this a concrete?
No, also a video.
Oh, and a video here?
But I have not prepared the video.
Are you aware, is he aware of, of, of the game, you can't gamble on them?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Paying more money?
You can bet on it.
Not at all?
He owns it.
You bought the actual machine yourself?
He owns it.
Uh, we wanna, before we get the license, we wanna see if they work on it.
We bought everything in the building when we acquired the, uh, the facility.
Was the machine already out?
It's not.
Any other questions?
May I make a motion we approve the common victory license for the Steel Foods?
I just wanna go on the record before we say that, before you vote on this, the Lawrence Police Department's against this video motion. You can do what you want, but we're...
I think that we should consider a motion to approve the common victory license and let the city, let, uh, inspection services, uh, do some homework on this video, like, video, obviously, pending...
Oh, he said you can do it any you want. And he said, oh, that's all that counts, right? Sergeant Cirillo said you can do it any you want.
Okay.
But, but the chairman's making a recommendation to have inspection services.
I'll make an amendment to my motion to include that.
Second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, David.
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Mal, next item on the agenda is, uh, why exactly is multiple services, the common victory license? Okay, the common victory license for multiple services is previously applied, find a common corrections. All issues are completed by Lawrence Fire Department. Okay. Any questions?
May I make a motion we approve the common victory license for multiple services in Broadway?
Second.
Does the motion on the floor has been seconded to approve the common victory license for multiple services? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, David.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Camila Restaurant?
It was lost in a farm, I guess, a good word, is Camila Restaurant?
Is anybody here for Camila Restaurant?
Yes, I represent the Camila Restaurant and the owner, the proposed owner is here and the landlord is here too, Mr. Roger Barrow.
The client for common victory license, uh, requesting hours of eleven A.M. to three A.M.
Is that the old steakhouse?
That's the old, yes, Sam's Steakhouse in South Lawrence, where there's no trouble.
Well, we might have trouble there. Uh, yeah, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, the Lawrence Police Department's against those hours, uh, eleven A.M. to midnight would be what we, we would want. And, uh, again, going along the same lines of fairness that's been across the board, this is a new license. Again, we're against that, anything being open after the hour of twelve o'clock as a new establishment. So, I think, uh, staying with fairness, those hours should be eleven A.M. to, uh, twelve, twelve A.M.
Are they okay with that?
My client is looking for the three, if there's a compromise. Uh, I've heard the comments of the board earlier this evening on the other cases that Mr. Kelly had. But this gentleman just coming into the business is opening up...
The city's changing, my friend.
I'm aware that.
Hours are becoming a huge problem there.
And with the city for seventy years.
They get out and creating a lot of problems.
Well, we, my client doesn't have alcohol at the current time.
It doesn't, no, they're not going there to drink, they go there to eat.
So, in any event, and, and it's needed, they need to eat at that hour of the night because people get out of these other places, they're hungry, they'll have a place to go and have a meal.
After they drink, they need to go home.
Yeah, in any event, uh, I think it's unfair to shut them down at twelve o'clock when they're starting to...
I think it's fair to start them out with that, if you're on, if you're on the ceiling. Make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the common victory license for Camila Restaurant. The hours from eleven to twelve. Eleven A.M. to twelve.
Is the motion on the floor for a common victory license for Camila Restaurant from eleven A.M. to twelve P.M., Monday through Friday? All in favor?
Aye.
There's no problems, you can come back and try to...
We will come back, but unfortunately, we're having too much problems.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We have twelve. Okay, next item on the agenda, the common victory license for Angel Sanchez, the associate restaurant.
Good afternoon.
How you doing? Two twenty-two Broadway. Same thing, we're acting from ten A.M. to three A.M. You're gonna have to be willing to, ten, ten A.M. to twelve P.M.
Well, they've been in business eight years now. They haven't had any trouble during a period of time.
Where exactly is this?
Two twenty-two, uh, Broadway.
Yeah, well, what, next to what?
It's next to...
What are you next to, man?
Uh, across from the Plaza on Broadway, next to the Barbershop where there's a bakery before in the corner of Raffor and Broadway.
You haven't opened it three o'clock in the morning, no?
No.
No, no, he said they've been in business for eight years.
I'm sorry, can you see their location?
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, well, the president, we're having, not...
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the common victory license for the Angel Sanchez Restaurant. The hours, ten A.M. to twelve A.M.
Second.
Does the motion on the floor has been seconded to approve the victory license for the Angel Sanchez, the associate restaurant, from ten A.M. to twelve A.M., Monday through Friday? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a used car office space only for Jerry Gonzalez Jr., DVA Famous Auto Sales. Where are you on five sixteen? You were supposed to be here on five sixteen.
Five sixteen?
Yeah.
May sixteen.
May sixteen.
I was thinking of the one we had.
That was the original day we had it here.
Oh, no, that won't be there, I wasn't able to make that hearing that this is the only one I would be able to make before.
Your name for the record?
Jerry Gonzalez.
Any other questions, Mr. Johnson?
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the used car office space for Angel's Auto Sales.
Second.
Does the motion on the floor has been seconded to approve used car office space for Jerry Gonzalez? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is dime, Casby's DVA Prime Auto. Next item is a common victory for Yancalos Polo Supermarket, one sixty-five Essex Street. Hours of operation from eight A.M. to ten thirty P.M. Are you aware of the hours of operation? Tell them, ten A.M.? Eight A.M. to ten thirty P.M.? That's good. Any questions, Johnson? No?
May I make a motion we approve the common victory license for Yancalos Polo Supermarket? The hours from eight A.M. to ten thirty P.M.
Second.
Does the motion on the floor has been seconded for a common victory license for Yancalos Polo, eight A.M. to ten thirty? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Manuel Manoado, DVA Manuel Aragon, is moving from two sixty-two Lowell Street to six sixty-four Everest, Essex Street. From the Olive and Miami and Miami, yeah. Uh, are you aware, there's no tolling out of that address? Are you aware that you can only tow out of twenty-nine Janus Street?
Yep.
And are you aware that they only allow three cars there at one time per year?
Yep.
Okay, do you have any questions?
I mean, inspection services, it's, it's got some issues with this, weighing in on this, uh, they sent me an email regarding this.
Okay.
But, uh, unfortunately, I'm not able to open it. So, I mean, I don't think... If we can open it, uh, we might have some questions regarding this before we vote on it, or you guys vote on it.
Your name for the record?
Manuel Manoado.
You want to come up and speak?
Yeah, no, I wanna, uh, one minute, Saturnino.
What's your name?
Uh...
Are you gonna speak about this issue?
No.
No, you're not?
No, yeah, about the things, yeah.
Okay, that's a match.
Yeah, because, uh, I asked Saturnino, that's the one of the best, all right? This is three. Yeah, I, I wanna oppose about the towing service in this area.
What do you wanna oppose?
Because, uh, we also have a space for the parking.
But he's not gonna tow there. According to him, he's gonna repair cars there. He's, he's gonna fix cars there. He's not allowed to tow from there.
Okay. Yeah, because, uh, he's my neighbor. Yeah, I don't oppose, uh, any pa, any piece there because we are...
According to what he's stating, he's gonna fix cars there. He's not gonna tow cars, I mean, he can tow a car there. But I mean, I don't see, the home company's not gonna be out of there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another question, my train, why he don't be decreasing my train?
Oh, that's a whole different issue.
So, the train, the three is, he like, a lot of people go in there, a lot of people go in there.
That's a whole different issue, that's something you gotta take up with inspection service. His concern is that he doesn't want you towing there. Because he doesn't want you tying up the street because he's got a restaurant and he's got people that gotta be able to park. So, if we got fifty cars parked there, obviously, people can't get a truck.
Yep.
He's not objecting to you being there. He's objecting to the fact he doesn't want you wanting, you're towing.
Thank you.
Well, Cal, did you have, before you vote on this, though, I know inspection services wants to weigh in on this.
Okay, we can table it if they don't have all the information.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm trying to open up the...
Okay, I recommend, uh, yeah.
I'll make a motion we table any action on manual auto, table for the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, does the motion on the floor to table the matter because of inspection services reasons to table it, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll call you, we'll send you a letter for the next meeting, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we have two table matters, uh, for one day permits, for alcohol, for...
She was here and she couldn't stay, she was downstairs for some reason.
Oh, that's because we had an announcement.
If you just allow them...
She frequents here, uh, and one day permits, that's a good history of, uh, from Miami to the law. You wanna make a motion, vote?
Adjourn?
Oh, the first two.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who is, uh...
The last two.
The last two. Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the one day permits for the Spicka River event at the Boathouse with a Friday connection and an age and family reunion event.
Second.
Does the motion on the floor has been seconded to approve the one day wine and mouth, the Spicka River event and foundation family reunion at the Lawrence Boathouse? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, David.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Does the motion on the floor has been seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Will you adjourn?